All right, good evening, everybody. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Lynda Scheel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scheel. All right. Believe it or not, we don't have any special recognitions or tributes, so we're going to jump right in. So, welcome to the 2019th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, scheduled to take place on July 7th. Isn't that crazy? Time is flying, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here.
And we show seven members of council in attendance. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 2nd. Counsel?
So moved. Support.
I got motion by Councilwoman Scheel, support by Vice President. Do we have any questions from council? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
And President McCullough?
Aye. And the minutes carry, seven to zero. Jumping right into audience communication, the council has set aside 30 minutes that are not on, for items that are not on the agenda. Again, I want to do the disclaimer, you get three minutes, name an address for the record, and then if council wants to, we have council communication following right there, so we're not trying to ignore you. That is your time, and I'm sure one of us will answer one of your questions. So if you'd like to speak, make your way to either podium. Three minutes, name an address for the record, and let's get the party started. Good evening.
Good evening. Rob Drzewicki, Director of Government Affairs and Outreach. Good evening, council. Just a brief update on our efforts to educate the public about the Livonia Built Bond Proposal. Our communications team has been working diligently to direct residents to the only trusted source for accurate information, livonniabuilt.org. You've likely seen the logo and the QR code around town, on banners, on signs, bookmarks at the library. We're using every available method to inform the public. This is an effort in transparency. Livonia Today and Connections have multi-page informational pieces on the topic. Informational brochures are available in the City Hall lobby right here, in the rec center, in both the Bennett and Sandberg libraries. We've hosted tables at recent events, including the Ice Cream Social at the rec last Thursday, and the 75th Birthday Lawn Party on Friday. I think we may have broken a city record for amount of ice cream handed out in a 24-hour span of time. We've also held open houses at the library and the fire station, with more coming soon at the rec center and the police station, plus an info tent coming up at the Spree next week, which I know we're all excited about. The mayor has spoken to countless community organizations, the Lions, the Rotary, the Kiwanis. She's speaking to Friends of Livonia Arts right now, that's why she's not here. We're interested in having your homeowners' associations reach out, so those listening and watching at home, please don't hesitate to reach out if you'd like us to come speak to your HOA or your civic association. We, of course, want to continue this, and we've appreciated the support of so many of our council members, so don't hesitate to reach out with more questions to me directly or at livonniabuilt.org. Since we've been so visible, we've had the opportunity to hear a lot more questions from our community than we'd already received. So what I want to be doing is popping up here and giving you a weekly FAQ to help share accurate information. This week's question is $150 million, where is it all going? All this information is available, of course, on livonniabuilt.org, but police and fire, the building renovating and expanding, 55% of those funds are going there. The building of the library is 25% of those funds. Park Plaza and amenities, gathering space, passive recreation areas, about 13% of that. Infrastructure and bike walk loop, sidewalks, roads, utilities, 7%. And retail and residential is 0%. So if people are concerned about whether apparently the city is going to get into the coffee shop business, that's not in anybody's plans, I don't believe. But thank you. If you need any of this information, including renderings, our library keeps a large stock, and we also have some right here at City Hall. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sue Williams. I live across the street at the Dea Fip's Senior Apartments. And well, I'm so happy to meet all of you, and especially see Laura again. We're old friends, we're friends, not old. Anyway, my proposal this evening has to do with making a walkway either with wood or cement at Greenmead, you know, not in the, just enough that because, well, it all started, there's a number of us that go and have lunch there. We take a bagged lunch, and we sit at the picnic tables. And one day, one of the gals said, "You know, we can't walk here at the events." And it's true, we can't because of the rocky road. And I said, "Well, we really need to ask somebody." So we marched over to that little office there, and we asked, "Could we think about doing this?" And she said, "Well, the city of Livonia is a very old city, and we don't want to ruin the flavor of having a cement street." And I said, "Well, if you're talking old, you're talking to the crowd here." And anyway, we didn't get much results. So I kind of sat on it for a little while, and I got to thinking, "You know, I need to come and talk to you guys," because Livonia has the largest senior population of any state in the state of Michigan, and if you look even further, if you look at some other states, we are still the largest senior. And we're your voting people, too, so, and we watch every single little thing, a senior, well, we don't have anything else to do, you know. And, but I will have to say one little thing here. I've asked so many times how I got to be 93 years old. And I kind of thought for a minute, and I said, "'Cause I walk." And I do. I walk every day with this group. In the winter, we do Greenmead, not Greenmead, we do Costco and Laurel Park, can be very expensive, but it's a good place to walk. But in the summer, we're sitting on a picnic table, and we could be walking and getting fresh air and stimulating our bodies and minds. That's what's important to be, get to be 93 years old, believe me, I tell you. So I guess that's what we're really wanting to do, is see if you could talk to somebody, see if they could make a little pass for us, and it would be lovely.
So right now, I-
Am I up?
You're pretty much up, yes.
Oh, good.
You finished with seven seconds.
Well, I could go on forever.
No, no, no. I just, listen, normally, normally, one, let's give this woman a round of applause, all right? Come on. So we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Ted Davis, he's incredible. He's taking notes right now, I'm watching him, he's taking notes.
I hope so.
So, listen, we're coming into budget season, and we're coming into the budgeting season.
Oh, goodie.
So we appreciate you more, and I can safely show everybody at this dais, we appreciate that you come into council and let us know, and having a face-to-face. I mean, I think, you know, I met you the other day, it's incredible time, so, thanks for hanging out.
It is an incredible time, and I'll see you at the Highland Gate.
You know you will.
And don't forget to wear your skirt the right way.
The skirt the right way.
Mr. Chair, if I may point a privilege. Sue Williams is a good friend, and she's a good friend of Kathleen McIntyre's, too. And she, Suzie, her daughter used to come with the ambulance to get my mother when she was so sick. And ironically, our paths crossed, and if you think she's funny, her daughter's even funnier, and my mother was just hilarious. So, you know, when she went to the hospital in that crazy ambulance half the time, we were all laughing as things got very serious. But Sue is a delight, and she moved into the apartments, she came from Redford, she moved in Redford. So just a little history on Suzie, and she had called me, and I said, "No, you got to come to a council meeting, I'm going to make you get out of there, walk, and come to a council meeting, share it with all the colleagues." Because it's one thing for me to call people, but it's another thing for all of us to hear it together, and I wanted you to meet such a delightful person as well. Thank you.
I still remember us playing, so for 93 years old, she's, when we were in Scotland, I'll just leave this with that, she's like, "My family has a, we have our old castle at a certain spot, literally five minutes in it, we pass it." So I take a snapshot of it, and I send it to her, I'm like, "This was not planned, I'm not a stalker." But it was so incredible, and that's, those are great stories.
I'm a Blair, that's my maiden name.
Yes.
And it's called the Blair Castle in April. And it, that's a little something, the Blairs were a whoring clan, they lived in caves. And if you knew some of my family, you would know where we came from.
I love it.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
I'm delighted to do that.
Likewise. All right, so I think you're up. Name and address, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Patrick Brockway, 14612 Melrose. I'm one of the 475 candidates for City Council. I just, I come before the Assembly of Council here with the utmost respect, and I'm not demanding, or I'm just asking politely, that with the way, with the upcoming millage vote, please, and I'm reiterating something that's probably been said multiple times, please have a backup plan. If this vote does not pass, please have something, because my understanding, and I could be incorrect, that you have a very small window to get another proposal through council, through the administration, and then get onto the ballot, say, November. So just please have something ready, just in case. Maybe you won't need it, maybe you will, but it'd just behoove you to have that, because I think that would be best for Livonia residents, and don't want, you know, the police and fire to miss out on potentially having different, you know, money being spent. Second note is Noble Library, okay? I just want to reiterate, society is never reduced by having another library or a community center. You're never taking away from a community. Libraries are one of the few bastions of society where you can go into it and have no expectation of spending money. No matter what your socioeconomic level is, it's a leveling field where anybody can obtain knowledge, get information. So just stating, Noble Library, if you were to keep it a library, or a community center, or something in the middle, I'm just stating, it would be beneficial to the city, and I strongly support that. Finally, just going to use this little bit of time for everybody here, and for anybody that may be watching this, it was recorded, August 5th, August 5th, August 5th. It's a summer election. Summer elections tend to have a low voter turnout, it's just how it goes. Historically, it has a lower turnout. So when you see your neighbors, when you, you know, wave, "Hey, how's it going?", even if you don't talk to your neighbors that often, wave to them, say hi, and say, "Hey, do you know about the election?" Maybe they'll look at you like you grew a second head, but that's okay, because they're going to know about the election on August 5th. And that way, we can ensure that whatever comes of that, for your primary, for your candidates, all 480 of us, we grew a couple more there, or for the millage, that you have the best representation of the will of the residents of Livonia. So again, August 5th, make a plan, be ready to vote. But thank you again for this time to speak.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Nancy Darga, 37637. I am the president-elect of the Livonia AM Rotary Club, and I serve also as the co-chair of the Rebuild Rotary Park project that has just been launched. I co-chaired this with the dynamic, Deanna Gaffney. Deanna, can you wave your hand there? And we come to ask for your help on this project. You know better than most of the citizens in this region, the devastation that the, and damage, the E1 tornado that hit Livonia in June of 2024 made through our community. And we all felt the collective grief in learning that a child lost its life as a result of this destruction. Rotary Park on Seven Mile became part of the ground zero of that touchdown, and experienced extensive damage to the comfort station and two picnic shelters, we lost 50 trees, and a lot more that's not, we will not detail. In that, the public park, the Rotary Park on Seven Mile was built by the Rotary Club of Livonia, and the shelter was also eventually built by the Rotary Club of Livonia. We have a very strong bond to that public space, and we are committed to restore it in full to what it did in serving this community prior to the storm. After a long struggle, you know probably again how long it took us to secure a settlement from the insurance carrier that covered the park, and we were devastated to learn once again that the funding that was made available from that settlement is far less than what's needed to replace the structures in full. And we also not only just want to replace them, we want to bring them up to code, make them ADA accessible, and solid beam so we don't have bird poop on people using the shelter, and we want to replace the fireplace. The two Rotary Clubs of Livonia have gladly joined forces to partner with the Parks and Recs Department to restore these most needed facilities, and to do so, to get them to the quality we want, we have to raise some additional funds over and above the insurance settlement, and also all the hard work that the city's doing, helping us do the architectural plans, demolition, and et cetera. We are asking this community to come together and restore the park. This is a strong community, this is a very gracious and giving community.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the residence time one minute to finish her presentation.
Support.
Support.
Thank you for your graciousness.
Are we good with an all in favor?
Yes.
All in favor.
All post? You got an extra minute, Nancy?
We have developed a simple funding campaign utilizing a separate account with Community Choice Credit Union. We thank them for also partnering with us. We have created a video, and I hope that it's placed on the city's website, interviewing people in the park about the need for replacing the section. We are hosting a wine tasting event, which is why we're here tonight. We need your permission to get a gamble license and a liquor license. All the revenue from our fundraising campaign through this flyer, and also from the wine tasting event, will go directly to the park project, and only to the park project. Your support and assisting assistance in getting the word out, and getting the support from the business community, from the residents and everything, to me, this is a barn raising. This is a project where we hope everybody in Livonia comes together and pulls all the resources we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jim Biga, I'm, live on Lake Ashire Road in Livonia. I represent the opposition to the millage that's being proposed by the administration. I want to also go on record that we are the only recognized group in Wayne County as the opposition. We try to speak the truth, we try to be honest and upfront, we do try to provide accurate information. There are other groups out there that are out there providing information, whether or not it's out there, it's not from our group. It may be things that we agree, people who like our website, I mean, our Facebook group may like, but that's people's choice what they want to do. I, too, would be willing to speak to any group that's out there, homeowners association, civic group, or anything else. You can reach me at my home phone, my mobile number, 248-231, I mean, 248-345-4954, I've got too many phone numbers. Or on the Facebook, Jim Biga, it's J.I.M.B.I.G.A. I can be reached there, and I will gladly come and speak to any group. I've offered to speak at the Livonia Westland Chamber, I haven't heard back from anybody on that yet, but we want to get out the word. We are citizens who have an opposition to this, and we have a very valid reason, and just like the administration has their valid reasons, I think both sides need be heard. Residents need to be aware of the pros and cons of this act, this very, very expensive ballot proposal. And thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Guerrero, I live at Dover Arbor Estate Subdivision, and I've been there for 12 years. These comments are coming to you based on a conversation I had with Catherine Sprader from the Inspection Office when we discussed current ordinances. Currently, some properties have very tall grasses and weeds, I've never had as many weeds as I've had in my yard this year, multiple vehicles parked inside yards, unused deteriorating RV and watercraft equipment stored that makes these properties look like junkyards. All of these conditions create a public nuisance and neighborhood blight. I'm so disappointed this continues year after year. It appears that the current conditions are not being addressed by the current city of Livonia ordinances, which are vague and need to be reviewed, updated, and clarified with stricter enforcement. The concerns have been submitted to you for some properties, there's many more, for the relevant ordinances we were able to identify mostly from Title 8, health and safety. We also would like to invite you to come to our neighborhood to take a look. The ordinances include noxious weeds and overgrown grasses, outdoor storage of recreational equipment that's unused and deteriorating, anti-blight regulations, parking on the right-of-way in a side yard, which is a hazard and not an approved site plan, unused vehicles stored outdoors and in front yards, are these vehicles titled and currently registered, which is required, trailers parked in driveways over 72 hours over a five-day period not being maintained for vacation use, and additionally, many commercial vehicles parked in front of residences. Please be assured, this is not about the property owners, only about the conditions that the properties are in. When I purchased my home, I was so happy to be adjacent to Dover Park. For the past three to five years, I feel like I live in a junk storage yard. I am very concerned about my property value, if potential buyers were to see this, and also about hazardous insects and rodents. Oversight and action should not be based on citizen complaints. The Inspection Department should be staffed and strictly enforce the clear and specific ordinances related to the current conditions that exist. The ordinances should not be vague. By allowing the conditions to continue, they just compound. So I would like to ask you these questions. Shouldn't we in Livonia expect that properties are maintained or improved instead of deteriorating? Would you want to live in these conditions? And I know we can't address it now, but what would be an action plan for us to follow up with you on about this? I appreciate the opportunity to bring these concerns to your attention, and look forward to any address to mitigate the situation so that our neighborhood can be returned to the nice community it was when I moved in. I have further comments, but that can wait for another time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Hefty. I brought my own placard. I was just in there, so I just felt I should pull it out. 8956 Melrose. I, too, am one of the 150 people running for City Council, so hello. Couple of things, like I wanted to bring up. First and foremost, you know, I'm hearing some of the citizen concerns, and I think the thing that breaks my heart the most, as a former appointee at a, in another city, is that that city council required that we be in as directors in the meetings. I went to every cow, every council meeting, every, you know, somebody, somebody did something bad meeting, and so it really bothers me that we are not holding our city, even appointees, accountable. I didn't even live in the city I worked for, and I was there. I was there more than the people who lived there, because, you know, when you're a public servant, this is what you do, you show up, it's all hands on deck, regardless of your political whatevers. The other thing that I do want to mention, too, is that, you know, I am not in favor of the, of the bond millage, but it's because I'm a prolific grant writer. I worked for a city, and I raised over $40 million as a one-person department, and they were all government grants, and I provided zero taxpayer dollars to match those. I don't know if Livonia has a grant writer or a director of philanthropy and grants, but I am proposing that perhaps if somebody's running for mayor, or if somebody, you know, has any ideas, that maybe you might want to have somebody like this who has the expertise of every single department, because that's what you have to do when you write $40 million in grants. So let's just say this bond does not pass. I am offering my expertise as a citizen, as a resident of Livonia, to consult, not for a fee, okay, because I know we don't like consultants, but I will consult and give you all of my contacts for, for any grant needs that you have. Because I really do think that we can have what we want, we can have our cake, we can eat it, too, but I don't want to have to pay for it for 25 years. I'm already paying student loans, for 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Chandler, I also live in the Dover Arbor subdivision, I've lived there for 35 years. Very active in our neighborhood. My husband and I re-landscaped the entrance to our subdivision, we also cleaned out the Dover Arbor Park. Myself, my husband, and a few of the neighbors, including Deborah, and a lot of hard work went into it. It took us three years, you could ask Ted Davis how hard we worked on that park. I walked my neighborhood every day, all different directions, and in the last five years, I've seen quite a deterioration of campers, trailers, boats, junk cars. Being a former car trailer owner for 13 years, I paid every month to store our car trailer. Now I walk the neighborhood, and I see them in everybody's backyard, I could tell you seven right off the top of my head. Boats in driveways for two years, cars in front of houses for two years, very disheartening for me. I walk through the park, and I see a broken-down fifth wheel that's in a yard that cannot be taken out, because they've built a deck around the fifth wheel. All our hard work, and this is what I see when I walk through there. We call, we complain, we get excuses. We have houses that have weeds three feet tall, it's a tea garden. How do you grow tea? How do you know what tea is and the weeds? When my husband and I came before the city council several years ago for a, for a, for our garage, my husband was a mechanic, not any of you, a city council member said, "Absolutely not." You're a mechanic, there's going to be junk cars in your driveway, there's going to be car parts, there's going to be oil, nobody wants to look at that. We have zero junk, I wouldn't fight any of you to my house. But I walk around the neighborhood, and that's what I see, junk cars, oil, broken-down campers. It's just, it's so disheartening, and I'm asking that our ordinance officer either gets strict, we get stricter ordinances, or she has more of a say-so, because if this keeps up, it's like monkey see, monkey do. You got a trailer, you got a boat, well, I can do the same thing. We never had this before, and if it keeps going, it's only going to get worse. So all I'm asking is, give her more authority, write tickets, make these people abide by our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, Livonia, Michigan, of course. Just three quick things to respond to a comment last week about the flowers in the city center. I really like them. I think it really adds a lot to our community and makes it welcoming for everybody. No offense, Mr. Martin. And secondly, I attended the firefighters' open house last week for Livonia Built, and it was interesting, I learned a lot going there. But in talking with some of the staff members there, they were still very concerned in reference to not so much about the building and their facilities as they are to the staffing issues that they have in these buildings. You know, it's, they, they literally told me they had four people on staff at the main firehouse, and if they have to go, then, you know, who's going to take care of things? So my impression was that possibly that the city needs to sit down with the, your HR, Human Resource Department to find out what it is, and why people don't, workers want to come here to be first responders. You've got firefighters' job postings, you have police officers' postings, and I feel it's really important that we support them and find out, to get the root cause as to why, what problem is with the situation. So anyway, that's my observation on that. And then lastly, I know I've asked this question before, but what is council's protocol to respond to questions that people have when they address you? So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, again. Here in February with my neighbors, and many of us spoke. This is my fifth time in a row. Still, zero, zero done, okay?
And just for the record, can you just state your name for the fifth time?
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I know, but you needed, I know, for the record, I apologize.
You're good, you're good.
Ellen Dorman.
Thank you.
17211 Mayfield, Livonia.
Thank you.
And I don't want to mess up your last name, so Rob, you attempted, and I say attempted, to respond last week. All you said was what we already knew. It was really not in my- It was really not, in my opinion, a response. And I want to know what it takes to get something done. Since February, this is my fifth time in a row, zero people. I know you love the city or you wouldn't have run, okay? And I'm talking two things, not just the home, but also traffic from my property line to Sixth Mile. We've been to the traffic division, we've done all this, no response. It is a safety issue, not whether you like it or dislike it, it's a safety issue. Because when you try to pull off a Sixth Mile or onto Sixth Mile, there's cars on both sides. The police cannot do anything because there's no signs. And on my initial problem with homes, zoning, 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 okay? We are zoned, rural residential. They are definitely a business. There's no question about it. And I have, there'll be a total of five within the six thousand feet that I live. I don't want it, I don't need it, and I think it's against the zoning. So I just, what does it take? I've been to the state, the state put it back on the city. So I followed everything, been patient. I'm really frustrated and I don't know what else I can do. That's why I'm here again. I've sent you letters, you've read them. I did nothing this time. I figure, you know, it's all had to you, but you gotta do something. Do something, not just lip service. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve King, Coventry Gardens. By the way, I will be at Spree. You guys keep mentioning Spree, but you keep leaving me out of it. I'm going to be there the twenty-ninth for the, we always wrap it up with the fireworks, so Steve King and the Dillies will be there. Yeah, okay, so I brought a visual aid today. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Lorax. First published in nineteen-seventy-one, this Dr. Seuss classic about caring for the environment has become a favorite of children and parents alike. The wise Lorax speaks for the truffula trees. He warns the greedy wonsler that cutting them down will result in disaster. And I bring this because on Father's Day, I had an opportunity to speak to the residents at Newburgh Village, and to say they're upset is an understatement. And that's because the clear-cut trees, they removed all the trees over there, and one woman actually, she actually, she welled up with tears talking about her arborist husband who told her one of those trees over there was over two-hundred years old. If you haven't been over there, I asked every one of you to go that, walk that property. I don't think any of you did. I'm telling the citizens out there, you need to drive by there. It's obscene what has taken place. And so I looked to the Lorax, and I'm wondering if the residents felt this. And at that very moment, we heard a loud whack. From outside in the fields came a sickening smack of an axe on a tree. Then we heard the tree fall, the very less truffula tree of them all. And I wonder if they, and at first I was very upset about the Housing Commission and Jim Engels because he is the wonsler in this story, cutting all those trees, and I thought, wait a minute, you all enabled them. So in the spirit of Dr. Seuss, I wrote my own. In the village of Livonia near the here of blue dots, there once stood a forest with twisting tree knots. It rustled and bustled with creatures galore, but the council of choppers said, we want more. We'll pave it, we'll shape it, we'll flatten it flat, we'll chop every tree. Imagine that. We'll build us a village and a fountain that spins. Who needs silly squirrels or trees with thick skins? So they cut and they cut till the sky lost its shade, and the sun baked the village in a gold-burning blade. The owls packed their bags, the raccoons rode a bus. Even the bugs stopped waiting for us. Then came the wind with a terrible roar. It blew off the rooftops and rattled the floor. No trees, said the breeze. Then there's nothing to block. Time to shake the village right out of its socks. Now the council sits still in their councilly chairs with no birds, no leaves, not a breeze in their hairs. They stare at the stumps with a regret in their eyes as tumbleweeds whisper and dust fills the sky. Let this be a table, a lesson a must. When trees are all gone, the world turns to dust.
We got it. That's it. Appreciate you. Guys, 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 guys. I've always been respectful. Just please, respect the process, that's all I ask. Good evening.
Good evening. Denise Micah, Lancaster Road. Obviously, I'm against the village, and sitting at all these city council meetings, I went out and looked at the Newburgh Village decimation, and all those trees were cut down, and they weren't even, they're not even going to be building for a while, so why they were cut down, I don't know. But walking and talking to some of the residents, I tripped on some concrete, and I noticed that there are so many areas that are marked for fixing. So I asked this one lady, I said, oh, your house right here, you got, and she says, yeah. Eight years. They have marked those items three times, three times over eight years. And we're up here because we love Livonia. We want the best for Livonia too, and we should respect those senior citizens that are living in Livonia. Those people are with walkers and everything, and they are, it's a hazard. You go and look at the trees, you go walk and see how many, and some of them are faded, the paint, because it's been a while. And I was embarrassed, and I told them, I'm going to go to city council, and I'm going to tell them, eight years and they marked it three times, what's going on? You can't even maintain it for the senior citizens. And you say, oh, it's the old people, or whatever. It's the old people that built the city, that are still in the city, that are still paying the taxes for the city, and it's just a damn shame.
Thank you. Thank you. Guys, if we could, listen, I know we want to applaud, but please, just, it's the decorum of the meeting. I've been fair, I just asked for the same. Good evening.
Christopher Martin, great state of Michigan. Only got three minutes, so much to do, such little time. But at the last council meeting, this is of the June second meeting, and that was under unfinished business, and it was item number nineteen, it was the award of contract from the mayor, and this was regarding the pre-construction services at the police station, not to exceed seventy-eight thousand for the new police station facilities from budgeted funds. And I spoke against it at the time, and it passed on a four to three. That's what the deal was. I thought people should have waited, you up there should have waited until after the election seat. But here's the point I'm trying to make. I view this as it's a conflict of interest, okay? Because both Mr. Morgan and young Mr. Donavich voted in favor of this, and both have a conflict of interest, in my opinion, and I will read it, what that legal definition is, okay? A conflict of interest arises in city council setting when a member's personal or financial interests could compromise their ability to act in the public's best interest. This can include situations where a council member has a stake in the business, or a project being considered by the council, or when their relationship could influence their decision. Now, Mr. Morgan is twenty-five years, I think it was, retired, of service as a retired police officer, and young Mr. Donavich, for a brief period of time, was a reserve officer. But I think both of these, at best, should have gone to the Board of Ethics to see if they could even have voted on this, because I definitely feel that this was, they shouldn't have. They should never have voted on this because they have a personal interest in this. Now, I'm going to stop at that stage because I'm going to give paperwork to Mr. Fisher tomorrow and have him look this over. Next thing, it was mentioned, I'm going off script here, the next thing was the flowers. I'm not against flowers. Here's the deal. Those flowers on those poles are ten feet up in the air, you're driving by them at forty miles an hour, okay? It doesn't make any difference if they're real or plastic. Here's the issue. It's the maintenance of those things, buying those new every year, live plants, putting them ten feet up in the air, watering them twice a day during the summertime, is a tremendous amount of expense. So what I will do is I will file a Freedom of Information Act and find out just exactly what we're spending on those, okay? Recently...
That's time, Mr. Martin.
Okay. I'm not going to ask for my time to be extended.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Cindy Fleming on Woodring. I'm actually speaking up for my little next-door neighbor, another Christopher, and it's about the tree issues in Newburgh Village. He just finished kindergarten at St. Edith, and in driving by, he was brought to tears by seeing those trees cut down to the ground. It is very sad, and as I came in tonight for the meetings, I see these beautiful, beautiful burgundy-colored, they must be like a red maple or something. There's a couple really big trees, and I'm concerned that this new Civic Center project hasn't taken into account some of our trees that we should really be positioning and saving. So I just want to speak up again for the trees. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to council communications. I got Councilman Donavich, but just to give some of our business, what do we got? I got new data on item number nineteen, and on a happy note, Spree starts next week on the twenty-fourth, right? The twenty-fourth, the drone show Friday, fireworks are Sunday. Go online, Livonia Spree. It looks like it's going to be an incredible time, as always, celebrating our big seventy-fifth. We tried to get a dunk tank for the politicians because we think that that probably could have paid for a lot of things in the city. So we were just trying to put Livonia first on that, but with that, check it out, make sure you get your wristbands, and, I mean, I'm excited. I've got, like, my American flag cut off, ready to roll, man. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would spend my first ten dollars on dunking you in a bucket of water.
I know you would. So many people would. We'd make a lot.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to wish my father a Happy Father's Day. All the men out there that are fathers, thank you for what you do in leading households. So Happy Father's Day. There was something that was mentioned about a backup plan, and I think that was very important to mention, to bring up tonight. I'm not going to talk about the proposal, the bond proposal at length here by any means, but I've noticed this comment out there, there's going to be a backup plan, something's going to happen. I can't speak on behalf of the council or the administration, but from everything I know, that's just not even possible. It's not been talked about at all, but it's, from my opinion, that's not impossible. It takes years to work with bond council. It's a long process. It's a negotiation between the city council and the administration. This isn't something that just happens overnight. And there's also legal requirements. As you'll see later on this evening in a following meeting, when it comes to bonding dollars, there is a process, there are certain time restrictions, or a whole host of things that go on when you talk about passing a bond. And it's a good question, and something that I've heard that's been brought up. But again, if you stick for, stick around for the next meeting, there'll be bond language for the Newburgh Village project, and again, there are certain legal hurdles and time restrictions, just a whole list of things that happen. So I do not believe that it is even nearly possible to put something on, for example, the November ballot. It would be quite a long time before you ever saw something else happen. So I would say, no, there is no backup plan. And then just point of personal privilege, I want to cover one more thing in terms of the Dover neighborhood. I know some of the residents spoke about that, and I agree with you, I think there's been slowly a regression of people taking care of their properties in Livonia. I've seen it in my neighborhood, whether that be residential and or commercial. I would say that our ordinance department, I've spoken to Jerome Hannah, our ordinance director of that department, some of the council, we've had meetings over blighted properties, and there are already existing ordinances on the book that specifically address. I know you highlighted some of those, and I appreciate that due diligence, but I think people don't realize that the department, had the ordinance department need to know they have the backing of the council. And what happens is when you start enforcing the rules on the books that we should enforce, you are going to upset people. People want to park their trailers in their driveways and block roads with cars that are broken down, not cut the grass. They make the argument that they're noxious weeds, and they're some sort of garden, and all those things are things we've heard of at council meetings. But the ordinance department, if they know they don't have the backing of the council and the administration to go out and do their job, they're going to, they're going to take a step back and be very selective on what they do and do not enforce. So as one council member, I'd love to see strict adherence to those ordinances because I think they matter, and I think Livonia has a long history of keeping up appearances and keeping up your property. People pay a lot of money to buy homes in Livonia, and the least of which, people can cut their grass and not have junk in their driveway and things like that, but unfortunately, it's much more political than that, and I would just say on behalf of the ordinance department, they want to do their jobs, but there's more that happens there. And then, Mr. President, just personally, I know there's a resident that made some sort of comment about conflict of interest because I was a reserve police officer. I was kind of taken aback by that because I don't know what my experience as a reserve police officer, because I volunteered at the police department, has to do with me supporting a brand-new police department. I know Councilman Morgan, he was a full-time police officer for twenty-five years and served to protect and put his life in line many, many times for strangers. I would say that's, it's an experience that would help the police department and understanding. I've walked the halls of police departments for years of my life, and I know what it's like, and Councilman Morgan knows what it's like a million times moreover, but I just don't think that's a conflict of interest by ordinance for sure, but I just would like to say that for myself, that being a reserve officer has nothing to do with me passing a bond in my capacity as a city council member. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I got Vice President, and I'll go to Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick to follow up a little bit with Mr. Donavich, had to say, there were two residents that came to us with the blight issues. If you could contact our office with a little bit more specifics, I'd be glad to follow up on that with you. So just feel free to email all of us or me specifically, that's fine, and we'll get to there. On the conflict of interest that came up with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Donavich, when we were purchasing land from LPS a year ago, I'm a full-time LPS teacher, I actually went to the law department and asked, and they said there is absolutely no conflict of interest because I have no fiduciary responsibility for the Livonia Public Schools. I work there, but I have no, you know, financial decisions, as would neither of these gentlemen with the police. So that is absolutely not a conflict of interest. It was, you know, I went through the legal process to make sure, and it was not for me, so nor would it be for them. To answer the resident who talked about the flowers, yeah, it makes me happy driving by them too, by the way. And, you know, a couple other shout-outs I just had this last Friday. We played in the LSO golf outing. I know Mr. McCullough was there as well, had a good time. Oh, I didn't bring my trophy down. I won a trophy, but, you know, anyway.
You cleaned up.
I did clean up, yeah. And then on Monday, I had the opportunity, last Monday, I had the opportunity to play in the Angela Hospice Golf Outing as well, another great organization that is right here in our city. AM Rotary, thank you. I know Nancy Dargis spoke a little bit earlier. She had me at wine tasting, so I'll have to get over to that. But Mr. McCullough and I had a chance to speak to the AM Rotary last Wednesday. We got our soccer balls, we were ready. That was a great experience, and I just wanted to thank them for being such great hosts and having us in that day. And then last but not least, Ms. Buzinski had me at her coffee hour on Saturday. We had a nice crowd there. Question came up regarding the DPW vehicles that are parked behind the police station. Those are parks vehicles and equipment, so they are stationed there because they're used on the Civic Center campus. So I did want to get that answer. There is never an intent to park them at DPW at that building. It serves the city, saves the city, I should say, both time and money by having them parked where they are, by not having to use staff to move them on an everyday basis over here from DPW. So that was the one question I needed to follow up on from that coffee hour. Speaking of that, Councilmember Buzinski and I will be taking our show on the road. We'll announce locations and dates for that pretty soon, and I'll let you expound if you'd like to, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the woman that's been here five or six times in regards, you live on Mayfield Street, I'd like to offer in a resolution to go to law to look at the distance of these different group homes. I think as I studied it and I had some help from a couple...
You need support.
Oh, for what? Oh, the resolution?
Just sake of discussion, yeah. Do we have support?
For sake of discussion. I'll support.
For sake of discussion, the floor is back to yours.
All right. Thank you, Kiri. Anyhow, after doing some study on it and looking at it, even... Anyhow, after doing some study on it and looking at it even closer, not that we all haven't looked at it closer, but had a little bit of time, I think, and I'm not an attorney, thank goodness, but in many respects, I think if we start adding distances, and I think other municipalities have done this, I think we might be able to plow some safe ground on this so that we don't get too many in a given area. So that would be my suggestion, if we could just take a look at that, whether it's true or not, or whatever our esteemed law department concludes, I'd be more than happy to put my confidence in you.
Cool. Well, thank you, Councilwoman Toye. I got Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll be in support of the resolution this evening. I don't think there is much more we can do. I think the law department's looked at this pretty hard, but maybe there is something. Maybe, if people don't know what's going on right now, there's residents coming here multiple times about group homes, adult foster care, adult group homes in Livonia. Local municipalities, the way we understand it, our hands are tied because the state legislature took that power from local municipalities. They took that zoning authority away from us, and they dictate zoning. They dictate where those homes can be. They categorize group homes, adult homes, as residential use.
Right.
Therefore, they're allowed to operate in residential communities. I disagree with that. I wish that wasn't the case. I think they don't know what us locals deal with. They're in Lansing. They have no idea what's happening in individual communities. But it's their belief that they think that this is a need in the state, and they've taken that control away from local municipalities. So I'll be interested to see what our city attorney says, and just for the, you know, we talked about this last meeting with Carter Fisher. If we pass some ordinance that circumvents the state legislature, all that would happen is the attorney general would sue us. We would not be in compliance, we'd be violating state law, and they'd shut us down. So we wouldn't, we'd be going through a process for the simple fact of going through the process. So long as we're not subverting state law, you know, I'd be okay with looking at this closer and going from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Yes, Councilwoman Budzinski.
Yes. So I...
We do have a motion. We're just still...
Oh, sorry. I thought she was going somewhere else.
Wait, are you... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So on the motion, council...
Sorry.
No, you're good. Any further comments on the motion? Anything from the...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to be clear. It's not that I'm against group homes at all.
Oh, you know...
You know, they benefit a lot of folks, a lot of families. My brother was disabled all his life. He stayed at home. But I'm just saying, I think we gotta, if we can get our arms around it, and then if we can approach our legislators to maybe make an amendment to the law as well, if we find it's not, you know, within our preview, then, you know, that's what they are. They're lawmakers.
We're the representatives of the people. We have a resident that has questions. I think this is the right move.
Okay. So that's why I thought, let's take a stab at it, or a look at it, whatever you want to call it. Okay, thanks.
No, no. So right now, is there any... You can't talk from there, I'm sorry. You're good, you're good. Any comments from the audience on this matter? You have two minutes, but you got to make your way to the podium, name and address. So if you want to speak...
I have to get up to the...
But we do have some. Come on up.
For your information, there used to be about five years or so ago that the state had, you couldn't have, you could have the thousand feet because there was one that we heard that was going to go on, it wasn't in yet or anything, but the state took that away.
Okay.
So I agree with what you're saying, but the state had taken that away.
I'd be able to get them to put it back.
I agree.
There we go.
I mean, it's one woman that owns four of them, right there.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen McDonald, Livonia. One quick thing to search into this is to ensure that these folks are paying taxes based on business and not homestead, because there's one around the block for me that I know they are not paying. They are paying homestead taxes on the property. And so maybe that would be a good avenue to get them in the pocketbook.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Hello, Deb Christensen, Livonia resident. Okay, so personally, I have a sister-in-law who's severely mentally impaired. I came into my husband's family some thirty-two years ago, and she was in a group home at that time, since the age of maybe seventeen, when they did deinstitutionalization. Does everybody remember when that happened?
No.
So here's the thing about my sister-in-law. She's been in the same group home since I've been in this family. Okay. So, and what's really lovely is that she has some of the same staff members, which is surprising, okay? It's been a really good fit for her. The family just was not able to care for her at home with her violence, and she's had multiple hospital stays, and that just doesn't happen anymore, these long-term hospitalization stays. Additionally, my mom, when she became ill and fell in her home and lived independently, my brother and I were put into a position where are we going to put mom? Who's going to take care of mom? You have both of us working. We found actually an adult foster care home here in Livonia that was a very lovely home, and that's where my mom lived the rest of her days. And so I just want to, from this perspective, if the state didn't, if the state allowed cities to have that power, then I would believe that there would be discrimination that would be happening, and that shouldn't be happening. So I'm glad that the state has power. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We can't be doing that, guys. That's the third request. Listen, I hate hitting the gavel. I do. So please don't make me do it any further, but we can't be continuing on doing that. Thank you. With that being said, I don't see any further audience communication, so I'm going to go to the clerk to take the vote on this. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
I did have some. Just, would Councilwoman Toye, through you, be able to just clarify, is this going to committee, or is this a report and recommendation?
Law.
Just report and recommendation?
Report and recommendation from law.
Just for information.
Just wanted to clarify. Appreciate it.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. I'm now back to council communication. Councilwoman Budzinski, the floor is yours.
Yes, no, thank you. I wanted to thank my colleague Martha for joining me for my coffee hour on Saturday. We had a great turnout. I will be doing a Facebook Live tomorrow to talk about the Livonia Built Bond, literally going over the PowerPoint that Martha had gone or presented, and we'll be doing that again in some other locations in the weeks ahead for those who have questions or want some more information. But really, you know, I normally do a lot of updates. I'm not going to do that today. You know, it was kind of, it was a hard weekend. It was sad, not just for Minnesota, but for America. I'm sure all of you are aware about the murder of State Representative Melissa Hartman and her husband Mark, and the attempted murder of State Senator John Hoffman and his wife Yvette. This is scary stuff. When people's lives and those of their loved ones are at risk for doing their jobs, it really, it discourages other people from wanting to do that work, and, you know, understandably so. And that means that we have good people who then don't want to do this good work that we need folks to do. So, you know, that's not good for anyone, and it makes me sad. And I don't want us to overlook these tragedies, and would just like to take a moment of prayer, reflection, or silence to honor the lives lost and for those whose lives have changed after this weekend.
Thank you. Is that it? Councilwoman Budzinski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scheel?
Thank you. Real quickly, I'd like to offer a resolution for review of our council rules for ZBA appointments to the Committee of the Hall. Support.
Support.
And the reason is, we have, we will have four new council members that come on next year. We just want to make sure that our rules are as tight as they can be.
Sounds great. So we have a motion. Do we have any discussion from council? Anything from the audience? What commit, did you say a committee you want?
Committee of the Hall.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other council communication? Seeing none, I have one announcement. So mark your calendars, June twenty-first, eleven to two, Livonia Pride is being held at Schoolcraft College. There's a lot of effort that's going into it. If you're looking to do something and want to support that, then make your way there. There's a lot of information online. I know the city's posted some stuff, but that's coming up, believe it or not, this week. So mark the calendars and be there. With that, we are now going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do not have any. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items one through eight on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on June second and determined to be non-controversial.
So moved.
Support.
Ooh. Give it to Scheel. Scheel on the support, Donavich on the motion. Any comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Consent agenda passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number nine is unfinished bidding, unfinished business in meetings of the committee. Item nine is a finance and budget committee meeting that took place on June ninth. The subject matter was the annual audit reports for the period of December first, two thousand twenty-three, to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Council President, you want to take it from here?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I am the committee chair of Finance and Budget Committee. So we had our first one of the year last Monday on the June ninth. I was present as committee chair, Mr. Donavich as a committee member. Mrs. Scheel, who's our committee vice chair, unfortunately was not able to be there. Other officials present were our council president, Mr. McCullough, Councilmember Budzinski, Carter Fisher, our city attorney, Deborah Lichtenberg, our finance director, Connie Kumpla, our chief accountant. And then from Plant Moran, we had Keith Schmansky and Stephanie Atkinson. We also had an assorted group of residents who were very interested in hearing about the audit that day. The meeting convened at seven P.M. I opened the meeting with an explanation of the budgeting process, including the audit, the development of our annual budget, the public hearing, and then the council vote to approve in the fall. The meeting was then turned over to Plant Moran to report out the audit. Mr. Schmansky from Plant Moran presented the city of Livonia audit for the fiscal year ending November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. The audit was clean, and as expected, Livonia is in great financial position. Stephanie Atkinson, also from Plant Moran, reported on the general fund. It is up three percent from the prior year, mostly due to an increase in property tax revenue, and fifty-five percent of our revenue does come from residential property taxes. Expenditures were up four point four percent. Two point five million were public safety costs, which are the biggest portion of all of our expenditures. And in fact, eighty percent of all general fund expenses are due to personnel. Looking at the comparison of the fund balances, a percentage of expenditures, this is eighteen million dollars, which is due to good financial management. We have three months of expenses, which is considered a very healthy fund balance. Livonia has a lower unrestricted net position due to our millage structure. The benefit of that, of course, is transparency. However, it does give us a little bit less flexibility regarding spending. Plant Moran also indicated that due to the strength of the financial department, there were no findings or questionable costs, and in a letter sent to council, no major changes are required, nothing new to implement with a clean audit, and we need no adjustments. The city outperformed the budget by one point eight million dollars. Our retirement is ninety-six percent funded, whereas the state requires sixty percent. So we're doing a great job there. Our pension funding is also at ninety percent, or ninety-six percent funded, based on the recommendations from our actuaries. Livonia is a best-in-class for being so well-funded. One recommendation from this audit to look at for the next budget cycle is costs and fees. The city has realized a five point seven million dollar shortfall, and this has doubled over the last few years. Another note, fifteen years ago, we hit rock bottom during the recession when home values plummeted, and this, of course, reduced taxable values. Last year, we were finally able to regain back to that level. Excellence in fiscal conservancy during this period helped the city to not pass the burden on to taxpayers. The reality is that either the lesser of five percent or inflation is the limit on taxable value increases annually unless a transfer of ownership occurs. But they can drop an unlimited amount, and that's, you know, what happened then. And this, of course, goes back to Prop. A, which passed back in nineteen ninety-four. The meeting adjourned at seven forty-six P.M., and this subject matter will remain in committee as a standing item. We recommend to receive and file the two thousand twenty-four audit as submitted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No, it was a good meeting. Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience? For the, now, this is for the audit for the city?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm sorry. No, you're good. You're good. All right, with that, that's a receive and file. We're going to move on to Finance and Budget, number ten. So we're moving on to unfinished business. It's a roll call. Proposed amendment, and I'm going to preface this that these are super long. They're the water bills. We've studied them. Anybody that's been to these meetings, I'm not trying to race through these, but this Proposed amendment, and I'm gonna preface this that these are super long. They're the water bills. We've studied them. Anybody that's been to these meetings, I'm not trying to race through these, but this is the formality. So, if council doesn't, you know, jump into this, it's because I think we've talked about it till we've been blue in the face, so. Uh, with that, item 10 is a roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Section 40 of Title 13, Chapter 8, Water Service Rates and Revenues, to provide change, changes in the water service consumption rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2025. A first read was given by Councilwoman Linda Sheil on June 2nd. Councilwoman Sheil, would you like to?
I'd like to offer the second reading and the roll call vote.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or concerns from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item 10 carries seven to zero. Moving on to item 11 is another roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Section 50 of Title 13, Chapter 8, Water Service Rates and Revenues, to provide changes in the water service consumption rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st. First reading was given by Councilmember Rob Donovan on June 2nd.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer a second reading.
We have a second read. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Item 11 carries seven to zero. Uh, moving on to item 12 is a roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Section 50 of Title 13, Chapter 28, Industrial Waste Surcharge, to provide changes in the industrial waste surcharge rate to become effective uh, with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2025. First reading was given by Councilwoman Toy on June 2nd.
Mr. Chair, I will offer a second reading in hopes that next year you will have a rate cut rather than a rate increase.
There we go. Any other comments, uh, from the council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye, aye, aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item, uh, 12 carries seven to zero. Moving on to 13 is a roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Section 120 of Title 13, Chapter 20, Livonia Sewage Disposal System, uh, to provide the changes for, uh, to the sewer disposal and maintenance rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st. First reading was given by Council Vice President Martha Tashnik on June 2nd.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I really think we need to make sure our sewage is disposed of.
I agree.
So, I'm gonna offer a second read on that and take a little
We got a second read. Anything else from council? Audience, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Item carry, uh, item 13 carries seven to zero. Uh, item 14 is a roll call. Proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Department of Law in reference to Section 130 of Title 13, Chapter 20, Livonia Sewage Disposal System, to provide for changes in the special, for the special rates for designated uses to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st, 2025. A first reading was given by Councilwoman Carrie Buzinski on June 2nd, 2025.
I'd like to offer a second read.
We have a second read. Council, any questions, concerns, comments? Audience, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And 14 passes seven to zero. We are now moving on to item 15 is an adoption of a resolution placing special assessments upon reference properties whose owners have not paid charges connected with the 2024 sidewalk program. This is Contract 24-G, Single Lot Assessments. This comes to us from the Office of the Treasurer, uh, council.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving.
Support.
We have an approving with support. Um, we do have our treasurer here. Would you like to just give us a little update on what you got here?
Good evening, Susan Nash, Livonia Treasurer. Uh, yes, we have the sidewalks here that, we've sent out the first notices. We have had some people already apply to be able to put it on, to have payments, and we do work with people as best we can.
Awesome. Anything, uh, from council? Anything from the audience? All right, two minutes, name address.
Steve King, Coventry. Is this, okay. So, this is, people have to replace their sidewalks, but if they don't, they, they get charged on their taxes? Is that what's going on? Is that, is that what I'm, I'm, I'm just?
Well, not through, yeah, I mean, if, would you?
Okay, through the chair. Okay, so.
Do you have the answer for it?
I can somewhat, and we also have engineering here, too.
Yeah.
So, engineering, correct? Okay, decides which sidewalks need to be replaced?
Right.
And the people are notified, and then the cost is put on, and then they pay for it. So, we will, um, work with people. There is, um, we can do it over like a three-year period to, they can pay for it. So, it's not all in one if they, if there's a hardship and they can't.
But doesn't it, I thought we had a road and sidewalk
Right, Mr. King, right here.
Oh, so I thought we had a road, a 10-year road and sidewalk replacement going on.
I think I might be able to answer if I may.
You might be able to more of that one, doesn't it?
So, having been an inspector when I was in college?
Yeah.
You know, the city did pass an ordinance back in, I think, 99 or 2000 that said if any tree roots were on the right-of-way, the city would eat the cost. But if it was a, if it was a contributing factor of the homeowner's side, then they would be levied with the cost. Um, and I think what it's saying is, is that in the event, so we still do our sidewalk program every year.
Yeah, right.
And I think that what she, this assessment does is if someone doesn't pay for it, then the money goes to their taxes, which I'm not going to give my opinion, because it's a voting matter right now.
All right. Uh, so it doesn't address why there isn't sidewalks?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
There's, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. And Treasurer Nash, I think I summed it up pretty well.
You did. Thank you, Susan.
Yes. With that, I'm gonna ask the clerk to take the vote.
Councilmember Sheil?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And item 15 passes seven to zero. Thank you, uh, Treasurer Nash. Uh, moving on to item 16 is a request to release capital improvement bonds comes to us from the Housing Commission for acquiring, construction, constructing, furnishing, and equipping approximately 100 housing units for low and moderate, moderate-income senior citizens, including necessary right-of-ways, site improvements, and ancillary facilities. Council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Offer an approving.
Support.
Support Toy? Um, do we have discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, thank you, sir. I know, uh, Jim Ingles, the director, is in the audience this evening tonight. Uh, I'm excited to, uh, to do this. Uh, the issuance of $10 million, uh, up to, not to exceed $10 million to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping approximately 100 housing units for low and moderate-income senior citizens, including necessary rights-of-way, site improvements, and ancillary facilities. All that to be said, that the Livonia Housing Commission is expanding Newburg Village 2, uh, roughly 100 units. It's been a project Mr. Ingles and his department have been working on for many years now. There are seniors in Livonia that don't want to leave Livonia, but they're ready to maybe move out of their homes. And Livonia is very fortunate that we have a number of housing units. And some people think that this is their tax dollars necessarily. The Livonia Housing Commission, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but essentially, uh, self-operates, right? They, they bring in money for rent. We operate, uh, essentially apartment units, and they pay rents at much lower subsidized rates than they would at a typical apartment building or condo somewhere else. And the Housing Commission essentially, uh, operates a residential apartment company for seniors in our community, and now we're expanding 100 units. So, this bond will be paid for and through the Livonia Housing Commission. They are subsidized to some extent with federal grants and, and various federal dollars that any community applies for, but this doesn't come directly from Livonia city taxpayers in terms of city bonds or city taxpayers. So, I'm excited to see this project, uh, come to fruition. Um, I don't know if it'd be appropriate, we could ask Mr. Ingles how long the project would, when they want to start and how long it would take, but I think it would be nice to have that on the record.
Sure.
Because I know some people have talked about, you know, when is it starting? And it's starting. It's, it's already started.
Mr. Ingles, you're here. Would you mind answering? If you don't mind.
Um, I'd like to know where this is.
No, you do. Listen, I'm just happy to have you here, but no, when, when we get to that, I'll go to the audience.
And Mr. President, I'd like to acknowledge also the bond council's here with us this evening as well. They do a lot for all things bonds, so if we have any specific bond questions, we can give those expensive attorneys a couple of good questions.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, thanks, Mr. Ingles, for being here this evening. Uh, when do you want to start the project, uh, vertical construction? I know you've already started with land clearing, and, and as we know, there's a ton of work that goes on administratively behind the scenes with stormwater retention, engineering, and blueprints and all those things. But give us a quick little, uh, summary. Where are you at? How the process is going?
Yeah, we rezoned the property many, many years ago. Um, the project is moving forward with a request for proposals to hire a design firm to actually do a site plan that will go through the Planning Commission and onto City Council. Um, we are also in the process of looking at where we're going to be placing our residential units on the site, talking about stormwater retention, building codes. Um, so we've met with several city department heads to talk about that. Dave Lear and our engineering department has done a great job of putting together and working with the design firm, uh, with all the site boundaries and all the sightlines, so we know where all of our utilities are. Um, we know where we're going to be placing the utilities. Um, we also know where we're replacing our retention for stormwater. So, project's moving along. We hope to break ground, at least have a dedication, um, probably in the next month or two, and then break ground, uh, hopefully in late summer, early fall.
Well, Mr. President, that's moving pretty quickly. And, uh, Mr. Ingles, we've already went through the 45-day public comment period for bond requirements, so we've already adhered to all the bond, uh, requirements and legal, uh, kind of hurdles.
That's correct.
Great. I think that's it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Toy?
If I may, Mr. Ingles, Mr. Ingles, if someone wanted to, um, move into one of these, um, is it, when, when are you gonna open that up?
I would say construction will take place, um, over the, through the winter and probably into the spring of 2025.
25.
25, 26, 26.
So, they should contact, um, the housing?
They can contact me. Contact the Housing Commission. Yep, I'm, I'm a disseminator of a lot of information. I've already gotten calls today from a couple of landowners on Plymouth Road that are going to abut us. Um, they're very excited about the project. They knew it was gonna be coming, so, um, they're asking questions just as council's asking questions.
And they're all two-bedroom. Is my memory serving me correct? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, over the years with Silver Village, um, we did mostly two-bedrooms. Um, at Newburg Village, we did mostly one-bedrooms. But we find in marketing, most of our residents really like the two-bedroom for grandchildren, computer room, whatever, a little more storage space, because a lot of people are moving from single-family homes. So, our, the Housing Commission's felt that in the future, we should just focus on the two-bedroom units.
Perfect. And those should, I'm gonna guess those will move really quick.
Oh, yeah.
Waiting list-wise and?
Our waiting list for Silver Village and Newburg Village right now exceeds several hundred people. Both waiting lists are currently closed because we can't serve the demand.
Oh, dear. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan?
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Ingles, when would the date of issuance be for these extra dollars? When will you get these dollars?
Oh, okay, when we will go out and hit the bond market?
Yeah.
Um, we will wait till we get site plan approval, get our construction bids put together, uh, know that, knows numbers first, and then we'll be working with, uh, the city's bond council to decide when we're gonna hit the market, and what is the best time to hit the market.
So, is it reasonable to say before fall?
Before year end, for sure.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? I'm gonna go to the audience. Audience, if you have communication, make your way to the So, no, Newburg Village, yes.
Where?
Newburg and Plymouth. Yeah, Newburg Village.
Yes. Mr. King.
If only I was Scottish, I could get more time. Uh, okay, I got two minutes.
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, I got two minutes. Okay. You should, uh, hold up these funds. You guys are so quick to build something brand-new. Two people have broke their wrist falling on those sidewalks. That's the greatest generation living in Newburg Village. They suffer in silence. They don't complain. We begged a couple of them, "Come to council." Eight years. Every two years, they repaint the dots. Nothing gets fixed. The irony of cutting those trees down? The bushes and trees the commission is responsible for are so overgrown that a resident removed a bush on her own because it was a hazard for traffic, people backing out. You should hold up these funds till those sidewalks are fixed and everything is copacetic. I, I talked to a resident promised 10 years ago for new carpet. She's been there 20 years, no carpet. The furnaces are so loud, you can't talk on the phone, you have to turn the TV up. One invited me in. I went and looked at it, I heard it. It's like an airplane that wakes them up in the middle of the night. None of you have been over there. Shame on the Housing Commission. Those people are suffering in silence over there. He, there are dip switches on the furnace, of course, he doesn't know that, that will adjust the blower speed, that can, that can lower the sound. I, I, I'm just, I'm frustrated. Please, don't, I'm just, and you should be angry. The way, if you heard the residents, what they had to say. You, you need to fix it. Hold up these funds, get things right, and then you can move forward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Bigga Langshire Road, Livonia. A few weeks ago, I heard you talking to about another developer that you wouldn't approve something if things weren't fixed. Sounds to me like Livonia has to fix something before you should proceed with this. Because if you're gonna hold a developer, provide private developer to be responsible to his or her homeowners, you should hold Livonia to the same standard. Don't approve something if you're not gonna fix. I didn't know about the other things. I just knew about the sidewalks. And sidewalks are dangerous enough. If you can't fix something for people who are paying Livonia rent, your renters, shame on you if you can't fix that before you go out and build new. Again, that goes to the other issues that this shirt says, "Why should we trust you? Because we can't."
Thank you.
Is this about anything? Can I speak?
No, 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 this is specifically on the Newburg Village. Um, we'll have audience communication at the very end.
Can I just comment on the sidewalks?
Please.
The Housing Commission and the 2023-24 budget approved dollars to replace the sidewalks. We piggybacked on the city's engineering contract. The contractor last fall ran out of time. So, they are doing it, we are, we are scheduled to do it this year. Engineering department can confirm that that contract has already been awarded. We have postponed it a little bit because Racer Trust is also doing the remediation on the site right now. So, we don't want the contractor working on the site when we have buildings B and C kind of blocked off right now. They want to go in there uninhibited and then remove all that concrete. It's all been marked, has been approved. The contractor ran out of time in the last budget year, and so the dollars have been appropriated, and engineering is working with the contractor to get them out there.
So, timing-wise, I think with council, it's just with the analytics and specifics. Um, if I, I'm gonna go to engineering, do you guys have a specific timeframe? Because that would, I think, go a long way.
Uh, they were actually gonna be out there earlier this year, and then the Racer Trust, uh, is, basically had to go in there and do their groundwater contamination surveying and, uh, project in there.
So, next?
As soon as they are done.
Do you know how long they're thinking?
I do. Racer is done now. They'll be done by the end of this week. And then they'll be doing the rest of the renovation work, and then we'll be working with engineering.
Yeah, so, Rettondo is actually ready to, to get
Ready to go. Okay.
Yeah, they're just, uh, let's say it's a coordination thing.
Thank you. Councilman Toy?
Thank you, if I may. Mr. Ingles, um, I, I don't know for sure. I'm trying to remember if Newburg Village has a little newsletter or something. It occurs to me that maybe what we need to do is communicate with those residents a little more now that we're making things happen over there, perhaps. Because you and I both know seniors, and I'm one, you want to know what's going on, a- as you know. I mean, you get to a point where that's what you have to focus on all day, and, you know, rightfully so. So, maybe we can step it up with that communication. Yeah, and I know you're shaking your head, and you said we will.
They have a monthly newsletter, and I've worked with Elise, the manager there. There will be a monthly edition from me in there regarding the village.
Super, super, super good.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Buzinski?
Um, so I, I recently went to the Housing Commission. Um, I try to go to a different commission meeting each month, um, and it's always very informative and, and as was that one, and I know you guys rotate what topic you talk about at each meeting. So, the topic at that one was CDBG funding, uh, and related issues. Um, but I think maybe, um, it could be beneficial if council kind of got a report on the conditions and facilities and an update on our low-income senior housing facilities. Um, and if there's no objection from my colleagues or perhaps support to put it in, um, Councilwoman Toy's, uh, seniors and families.
So, we do have a motion. Do we have support for sake of discussion?
I already supported his motion, so I can't do that, I don't think.
Oh, wait, this would be
This would be to put in your committee, uh, an update from the Housing Commission on the facility conditions of Silver, Newburg, um, and McNamara Towers.
Uh, we have support.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, I just want to remind the council, I, I don't know if there's some sort of separation of powers issue here in the sense that we don't control the Housing Commission. The Housing Commission is a, is a, in essence, again, you guys are your own operating entity within the, the auspice of the city of Livonia. So, I don't know to what extent we have the authority, other than asking you questions with the Housing Commission and, and whatnot. I just, I don't know, this is unprecedented, in, in a, in a way, I think. I don't want to speak out of turn here, but for us to kind of oversee what the Housing Commission is doing, since you're your own governing body, we're not taking city tax dollars from you. since you're your own governing body, we're not taking city tax dollars from you. So I think it's just kind of an interesting position to be for the Law Department's perspective. And the counsel, again, we're the city council, and there are certain authorities we have and do not have. And just because some people are upset about a particular thing does not mean we can usurp those authorities and do whatever we wanna do. There are rules and regulations here. So, the housing authority doesn't report to the city council, so to speak, so...
Counselwoman Donovan, just for a point of clarification, I'm gonna go to our city attorney, if I may, just to say, the motion that Counselwoman Bzinski made is, I mean, I would assume that we have say in funds and stuff like that, correct?
I'm not clear on the specific motion. I think what she is asking for is that the degree to which the Housing Commission informs Newburg tenants and how they inform Newburg tenants of what's going on should be put into Counsel Mottoy's committee on aging. Is that...
Let me have, I'm gonna go to Counselwoman Bzinski, just to clarify.
Yes, and I mean, maybe it's just a report and recommendation. I just meant a facility. What I was looking for really is just for counsel to have a better understanding about what are the facilities. And I know we get these in reports. But if we have overarching concerns about what investment needs to be made, what investment has been made, what the plans and timelines are for certain projects. I know this comes up regularly when Housing Commission-related expenditures are on our agendas. And so I was just thinking that, you know, providing counsel with...
Counselwoman Bzinski, do you mind if I, I think I know exactly where you're going, and please clarify. Is there a way to gain more of a long, maybe a five-year capital plan for service improvements, capital improvements, what you guys are going to be forecasting through? Is that somewhere?
Yeah, I'm just trying to help us be more educated. Because when these issues come up, we regularly hear, you know, questions. And so, how can we better inform ourselves, again, I know we're all busy. I'm not trying to give us more meetings, but I was just thinking if it's in a meeting environment, we could have back and forth and ask questions. And it is not to inform how the Housing Commission allocates funds, but it's just for us to have a better understanding when we're approving fund expenditures, what they're being used for, and what are the needs so that as we enter budget season, not that it's directly related, I do know this, but that we just have a better understanding as a counsel about the work that you guys are doing. That is all. And whether it's a meeting, or perhaps if it's preferred that it's just a report, that's fine with me as well.
Just my recommendation, this was a substitute motion, at least. This would, if I'm right, Mr. City Attorney, this would have to be voted on before we then jump back to the original motion.
That is correct.
So, being with that, right now, we do have it going into the committee. Subject matter, probably the, you know, condition assessment of all...
Or reports.
Right? Is that fine with you?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from counsel? Anything from the audience?
You can't do this.
If you have comments for it, you can. I know, no. You gotta make your way, can you make your way to the mic? I know, I'm sorry. I know, I know, I know.
But I'm just really curious.
I'm sorry.
I wanna ask a question. Are the commissions completely separate? Or are they like, there's the DPW, there's this, there's that?
Yeah, so the commissions, there are a bunch of sub-commissions of the mayor's office, the council. These kind of are set, I'll give you kind of an analogy. So we don't get off-topic at a meeting like this, where it's more of a voting meeting, that we can take a deeper dive into certain items.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. And I think that some seniors should be involved in their rhetoric.
For sure. And honestly, they're public meetings, and we'll let you know.
Can I say, state law requires, federal law and state law requires that a resident be on the Housing Commission.
Perfect. Did you have something, Counselwoman Bzinski?
I did. I realized that I might have disrupted procedure, and I apologize for that because I was not trying to undermine the vote for tonight. I was trying to just do something, which I should've done after we do this vote. So I would like to withdraw my motion, if I can.
Okay. The supporter fine with that?
That's fine.
Okay. With that being said, we do have a motion on the table. And we already went to the audience for Mr. Martin on that specific item, unfortunately. I know, we closed the public communication on that specific motion. With that being said, Mr. Ingles, I'll let you, if you're good, let me go to the vote. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Hold on, I'm the first one voting, so I wanna know what I'm voting on for sure.
This is the original agenda item.
The original, this is the original motion for the item on the agenda.
Item 16, yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Item 16 carries seven to zero. We are now gonna move on to item 17. It is an appointment of Lindsay Hakela to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Carrie Bzinski, Counselwoman, for a three-year term that will expire on June 12, 2028. Counsel?
Approving.
We have an approving?
Support.
Support. Do we have discussion?
I just wanted to say again that this is, to remind folks that the ZBA is a seven-member body, just like counsel is. Each counsel member gets to appoint an individual to the ZBA on a rotating seniority purpose. As noted earlier, we'll be looking at the committee of the whole to, you know, address the appointment process. My nominee for the ZBA is Lindsay Hakela. She is an engineer and architect who works for OHM. She works basically as a city engineer for the city of Romulus. She understands zoning, you know, all things construction. It's a passion of hers. It's something that we don't have a civil engineer on our ZBA currently. She also is an active member in the community and has served on the Livonia Historical Commission since 2019. She is a friend and somebody I trust to serve the city well, attend all the meetings, provide fair assessments that come before her from both residents and businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I got, let me go to Vice President, and then I got Counselwoman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just really wanted to start this conversation a little bit by first acknowledging Mr. Chris Bolivan, whose term is expiring as of basically this meeting, and the tremendous job he has done on the ZBA over the past six years. I actually was fortunate enough to serve on ZBA before I was on city council. And when I was serving on ZBA, I really understood what an amazing asset Mr. Bolivan was. And I wanted to thank him personally for mentoring me while I was on the ZBA. I didn't know what I was getting myself into, and he was such a guiding light for me, and I really appreciate that. I know this vote is about the potential appointment of Ms. Hakela, and I'm not trying to take anything away from her, but we would be remiss as a counsel if we did not take a minute to thank Mr. Bolivan, who is in the audience, for his service to our great city. So, thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Counsel Bzinski for her motion to nominate Ms. Hakela. I will not be in support of that motion. If you were at the study meeting, you heard a lot of my remarks as to why I was not in support of it. To summarize why I will not be in support of this evening's nomination, it's not necessarily about the nominee herself. She has some really great accolades and some great achievements professionally. As stated, Mr. Bolivan is a longtime ZBA member, and he's served with dedication, with experience, and with leadership on the ZBA. And I will not let go of the fact of we're letting go of a resident who has dedicated a lot of time and energy to this community as a volunteer. So I think it's a matter of principle that when we have residents, especially as experienced as Mr. Bolivan is as a land use attorney that are serving on a ZBA that regularly are the arbiters of land use issues, I think what more experience and what more of a qualified person like Mr. Bolivan to serve on that body. I wanna say it's been roughly six or seven years. He's served with dedication. So, I think it's a shame that we are losing Mr. Bolivan. I hope, if the vote passes, we are losing Mr. Bolivan. But I hope that regardless, he continues to stay engaged in our community. To all the residents out there, thank you for your engagement, and I'm sorry to see you potentially leave. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Scheel.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
No.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the item carries four to three.
Moving on to new business, item 18. I have to actually recuse myself because I am a member of the Rotary Club. Right? 18, for the chair.
It's Mr. Davis.
Are you bringing the non-pro, do I have the right thing? New business, 18?
Maybe I have the wrong thing. I do.
Mr. Davis, I appreciate you coming up. I'm gonna sit with you.
I thought I was getting punked for it. I don't know what's happening.
Me too, I'm coming to sit with you.
Agenda item number 18. It is a request for designation as a nonprofit organization, brought to us from, by Aaron Dobbins, not Mr. Ted Davis. This is for the Rotary Club of Livonia and the AM Foundation, as required by the state of Michigan, to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow a raffle fundraiser in the future.
I am not Aaron Dobbins.
Okay, well then introduce yourself and...
I am Deanna Gaffney.
Madam Vice President.
I'm gonna offer an approving.
Sorry, thank you.
Support.
Support, okay.
I am Deanna Gaffney. I'm with the Livonia Noon Club. I'm here with Nancy Darga, who's from the Livonia AM Club. Obviously, this is related to the rebuild Rotary Park project. We're trying to get our ducks in a row for this wine tasting event. We need one of our clubs designated a nonprofit and recognized by city councils so we can get some licenses to proceed with this event. So, even though my club's 80 years old, we've never been designated a nonprofit before. So, I need city council to recognize this as a nonprofit.
Okay.
So...
Well, we have a motion from Mr. Donovan and supported by Ms. Toy. Counsel? Any other comments? Anyone else from the audience like to speak on this? All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye, and the motion carries six, nothing.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Councilmember Toy.
You didn't vote, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I, that's okay, don't worry about it.
Now, the motion carries six, nothing. All right, we'll allow the president. It appears that Mr. Davis is no on the agenda.
I was just trying to...
Numbers.
I mean, I can take it.
Have some fun.
All right, all right, let's go with agenda item 19. A request to approve agreement for payment processing services with CP Pay Merchant, brought to us from the Department of Parks and Rec to allow global payments to process credit debit and ACH transactions by coordinating with our recreation management software, Civic Rec, from budgeted funds.
Motion for approval?
Support.
Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve from Mr. McCullough, support from Bzinski. Mr. Davis, why don't you tell us what we got here?
Thank you. Usually, I would not say anything because once you have an approving, you can only mess it up from there. But very briefly, this is for our credit card and ACH processing services, REC Center. This does everything from credit card transactions. Greenmead Senior Center, membership fees for the REC Center. So currently, this is our current provider. Our contract expired. This is actually a reduction in our fees, and we are limited with our providers we can use with our registration software. This was the best deal we could get, and we're asking for counsel to approve this agreement. Happy to answer any questions counsel might have.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Ms. Toy.
I'm a civilian.
Confusing.
If I may, Mr. Davis, thank you. Mr. Davis, we haven't had any kinds of issues with this organization or whatever, no.
No, we have not.
Okay, and also, I just wanna sneak in a big thank you for all you're doing for our new wellness center. I know that you're kinda, you know, swinging wavers.
I had hair when this started.
I noticed.
No, I wish I did, I'm sorry.
Now it's coming out of your ears, yeah. Okay. Yes, sir.
Hang on, I'm doing it.
Madam Chair, I'll relinquish my time.
I was about to gavel you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, okay.
Anyone else from counsel? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
You win.
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
You did good. I'm sorry.
It passes seven, nothing.
Thank you very much.
I concur. Would you like to take it back to the last one?
Take us home.
Take us home.
Take us home.
Let's go to agenda item number 20. A request to authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure Engineering Division for the Country Homes Park sidewalk installation from budgeted funds. Counsel?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Approval by McCullough, support by Morgan. Mr. Leir, I assume this is you?
Sure. Under a recent project to install ADA sidewalks to a bunch of facilities along Country Homes Park, we had the contractor actually do some additional grading and filling to get rid of some blow spots that became apparent during the spring rains, as well as fixing a couple of concrete road sections where the ADA ramps stump out. We're asking for an additional appropriation and expenditure in the amount of $12,712.50 from HUD funds that were, I guess, budgeted by the Housing Department.
Thank you. Counsel? Anyone? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Scheel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Bzinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And that concludes our agenda items for the evening. Now we go back to the audience.
The front is not on the agenda.
Items, yeah, not on the agenda. I saw who was coming.
Oh, what's wine tasting?
Yeah, when is the wine tasting?
When is it?
I'm looking it up.
Ask Brandon.
I'm looking it up.
Welcome. Name and address, please, for the...
Hi, my name's Chris Hinch, 9812 Cranston. I was very upset, hurt, and shocked at all the anti-group home sentiment that has been expressed by this counsel. I don't know how many people know this, but all the rules regarding freedom to, for people with disabilities to live in the community was started because of a lawsuit against a group home in guess what city 50 years ago. And you guys are still fighting it, and it's so maddening. The typical reasons that people state that they don't want any group homes is, oh, it's really a business. Well, if I have someone coming into my home and caring for me, even if it's 24 hours a day, does that make it a business? These are residences. That's why they're zoned as, that's why they're considered residents, is because they are residents. And the other reason is only too many cars. All these things are thinly veiled racist and handicapistic attitudes. If you would, people with disabilities deserve to live in the community that they came from or that they choose to live, and, but people don't wanna see them. They don't wanna see them. You know, we want all people like us. And also, many of the staff are African-American, and that's what really, between seeing people with disabilities and seeing black caregivers, is really the root of all this anti-group home talk. And some of you know my daughter, Emma. She's disabled. She has a deteriorating condition, and one day, she may have to live in a group home. She's lived in Livonia her whole life, and why should she have to move to another, more welcoming city if that ever happens to her? We have a neighbor right next door, has a severely impaired child. Where is he gonna live when his parents can't take care of him anymore? Down the block, this is on the same block, two siblings with disabilities, and their mother is extremely elderly. One of these days, they're gonna have to live somewhere else. And you guys are fighting to separate them, shove them into another community. And I, I'm gonna speak out about this until I'm blue in the face. This is just, it's like un-American to me.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Chris Bolivan, Livonia, Michigan. First and foremost, congratulations to Ms. Hakela on her recent appointment. I'd be the first to give that. You're joining a great board. What I really wanted to come up, everybody, was to thank the counsel. It's really an honor and privilege to get to serve as a ZBA commissioner. Okay? It's an honor and privilege to serve as a ZBA commissioner. You know, six years ago, when Councilman, former Councilman Kritzman appointed me. And then three years ago, when former Councilwoman McIntyre reappointed me. It's something you don't take for granted, and especially when it comes to an end. It really is something, when you're helping your community, it's something you cherish, and it's hard to let go, but at the same time, you know, it really puts an appreciation perspective. And thank you all for what you do. I know it's a hard position, it's a hard role, but at the end of the day, it's a process, and all I can say is, Counselwoman, Vice President Tashnik, Mr. Donovan, thank you for your kind remarks here this evening. Everybody else for the support, especially from the ZBA. And I leave with very fond memories in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Mary Martinez. I'm from, originally Westland, but I now live in River Rouge. I wanna share with you two topics I'm very passionate about. The first is Motor City Heroes. Motor City Heroes gives 25% of the Real Estate Commission back to local heroes like police, fire, nurses, and veterans when they buy or sell a home. We want to help our local community heroes with homeownership, and this is a perfect opportunity for us to show them appreciation by giving them 25% of any commission we receive on a transaction if you're buying or selling a home, which ends up being significant savings. I would also like to announce that I have published a young readers' chapter book, Adventure Abroad with the McComas siblings, that is now out on Amazon. Follow Mary and Michael McComas across the Atlantic Ocean on an adventure to Paris, France, to study abroad around every cor, sorry, study abroad. You can read about the exciting twists and turns around every corner while learning to use key principles, honesty, courage, perseverance, and consistency in your own pursuits to help the young readers attain success in any aspect of their life. Adventure Abroad with the McComas siblings is now out on Amazon. Please support your local author and purchase my book. I will leave information for the Motor City Heroes program over by the sign-in. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna talk on the same thing? You already spoke, so you have to wait till the study meeting now.
Oh, I just wanted to respond.
You can do that at the study meeting. At the next meeting, at about 10 minutes. You can do that.
Oh, that'll be cool.
All right, seeing no further audience communication, counsel?
Oh, should do adjournment, Chair.
Support. I think we can safely show seven? We'll be back in 10.